So, great. Thank you, no appreciate that Nancy. So today. Good day everyone, I'd like to call this meeting of the Budget Committee to order at ten AM on October twenty first. We are present in person here at City Hall and also several members virtually. Because our Chair Joy Nord is operating from a Zoom call this morning. She asked if I would chair the meeting, which I'm happy to do. At her absence and we will look forward to be you being back here in person for the next one, Joy. Okay? Great. So let's do a little bit of a roll call though. Could I confirm, would you please confirm what is missing? So. We've got two councilors who are not here, both excused Linda and Jerry.
Linda and Jerry.
City Manager Leila Mon is also excused today. Anybody know the whereabouts of Jeffrey Sunshine?
I do not.
Okay, are we missing any other committee members?
No.
Great. And we've got everybody with Chip and Joy online. Welcome to Nina Saman, also one of our most diligent. Attendees of city meetings, so nice to see you here. So this is really going to be Nina's meeting. And she's got some updates for us, both one general update and then. There's also some things in the works from the follow up from our podded. And then we'll be doing a first quarter financial review and adjournment. We're expecting about an hour of the meeting time, but of course we can be flexible. And I would ask Chip, since you started off doing such a great job with that. And we are all still learning how to do our best job with being natural people, but also being good for our recording later. If you'd like to wave your hand wildly or something if you can't hear us and then that way we can learn what's working and what's not. It's a little. Awkward for all of us, but it's better to learn to get better at it.
Okay, for now, using the headphones works a lot better. I can understand people much better than. The computer audio, if that's helpful.
Okay. Okay. Well, we'll take that as a temporary solution. I would still like to figure out, and I've given looking at Nancy for follow up, not. You do it, but what else can we do to make this a better audio experience for people watching the recording later or anticipating? So. Just know that's how it is. And if you are having any difficulty with the headphones, then Chip, please, please interrupt us, okay? Great, thank you. Okay, Nina, take it away.
Great, Tom, would you like a hard copy of the?
I think I printed it up.
You did, okay. Okay, well, thank you everybody. It's wonderful to see you all here, especially in person.
Do you want to give the call out of how long you've been doing these meetings?
I have not had an in-person meeting since March twenty twenty, right when COVID happened. So it's wonderful to see faces.
Yeah.
Hey, um, so just a quick update on a couple of things. We're already starting to think about the budget season, even though it's only October. So I've partnered with Kit and Joy and we're going to review the indirect cost allocation model again. Go through it and they're going to provide a recommendation to council on if they think we should continue with the same model or go a different direction or modify it. So we're going to do that in November.
Current models, what we're referring to, so line them.
Yes, correct, yeah. And so we will plan to come to our January Budget Committee meeting with a, they will have a recommendation.
Great.
For everybody, which will inform the budget process as we start to to get into that. And then also in January, I'll have the Budget Committee calendar for everybody, so we have the dates and the meetings for that. Um, uh, we've had a couple of upgrades at the city, which has been amazing for staff. So we have a new thing through Express Bill Pay where. Folks make their online payments called forms builder. So it allows, for example, short-term rental licenses for due in August. And last year, folks would make the payment, Chris would have to manually enter them into Castell. And then match the payment with the supporting documentation. Now folks can go on, make the payment, submit all their documents and it automatically exports over to Castell. So we don't have to enter in anything.
That's awesome.
Which is huge time saver when you're talking two hundred fifty entries. So. That's been wonderful. And then we also upgraded to a thing called real-time payments, which means. Um, as soon as a customer makes a payment, it automatically updates to their account versus us having to wait till the next day. And do a whole batch. And there could be delays if I don't get in the office till nine and Lori's waiting to see if a payment was made. Um, so we can tell immediately. Payments. And so that's been helpful. It's also been helpful for Nancy because it's allowed people to make court payments online. And it allows them, so when they get a ticket, they have a citation number. Once we get that, we enter it into Castell with. It gets its own unique number and they don't have that number. So they can't pay and have it update to their account until they get that from Nancy. But with the real sign payments, they can use the citation number and it will automatically export to himself, which again, she doesn't have to make an entry.
Question. So if somebody pays with cash or check, you obviously have to make an entry. But if they come into the office, they can pay via online or you've got like a way to swipe their credit card?
We, well, she has a swiper that she can do it at court hooked into her laptop, but we don't currently take online payments at the counter.
Okay.
That's a whole nother thing where you have to have a terminal and close it out every night and reconcile. So. We haven't really seen the need for it yet, but we're kind of waiting to see, you know, have you seen a lot of people trying to pay the counter? We just direct them to the website.
Most people, if they got a citation and know it was. Needing payment, I'd rather just say if not, come in.
They just call.
Yeah.
A question.
Yes.
So. So does that apply to any and all payments anybody going to want to make for a meeting?
There's some, we would have to enter manually. So the only time it comes over automatically is if they have a customer account in Castell. So. Um, if she's created something for a court ticket, short-term rental licenses, utility, business tax and business license.
Great.
But anything other than that, um, does require, I mean, an entry.
Now, is this because I know in the past Max has gone out and said, hey, do you have a business license? And the person says. I don't already know. Is this time because I know he was taking payments remotely when he was out doing it?
They can go directly online and pay and he can see that they signed up right there. And sometimes he'll call me to verify.
Cool.
So.
Yeah, so it's come a long way from handwriting every receipt and and manually entering all of that into the financial software. So.
If they pay online, do they need to, if they pay online by credit card, do they need to pay any fee?
Yes. So if you use a credit card, there's a service fee, three percent. But if you use an e-check, there's no service fee.
Mm-hmm.
To the P R as opposed to the city?
Yes.
Which vendor do you use when you operate a credit card payment?
Chase. So it's an intermediary. So we partner with Express Bill Pay and they use Chase as the intermediary. And then, and then Chase sends the money to us.
So Chase Bank is the processor on the transaction.
How, um, how often is the turnaround time when the vendor, you know, collect the payment and give you back the report and receive the money?
If it's Visa, it automatically comes over to our checking account the next day.
Next day.
If it's an e-check, so that all kind of goes into a separate account and I go in there and I wait until it hits. A couple thousand dollars. I do it about twice a week depending on if we're getting water payments or whatever. Um, so it's kind of like a a separate little account and I automatically transfer the whole bulk of that at once.
Because according to my experience, there is a reconciliation process when you have the credit card payment and vendor involved because it's always a timing. And then you need to do another layer of reconciliation with all these different type of payments. Uh, e-payment, credit card payment, and then somebody may send a check. So there will be different, different types of reconciliation. How often do you do that?
And that is correct. I do it once a month and there's a reconciliation for that e-check account. And then there's a reconciliation for the checking account, which includes cash check and all those Visa entries as well as, um, payments from the e permitting.
So you yourself do the reconciliation.
I do the reconciliations monthly and then I review them with Leila at the end of that.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Go ahead. And then, oh, go ahead.
So are we seeing, um, an increase in the percentage of payments being made and being made on a timely basis?
Yeah, it was, it was a big difference this year.
And do we remember if we've quantified that to a number, do we know?
I have not analyzed it to a number, but it seems like it is going up, especially for court. Um, it's been a huge difference for her, mainly for court.
Okay, and and what about, um, if we come to any conclusion about how much staff time we're saving as a result of?
Oh, gosh, I couldn't really put a number on it, but I would say exponentially, uh, we've saved a lot of time. And especially. Because the other thing we now take is through express bill pay, folks can pay their short-term rental taxes. And so they go in and they enter all of their quarterly information. And then make the payment and then it automatically exports over to Castell, which reduces, then. Uh, Chris doesn't have to enter in all of that information and then receive the payment. So it's been, it's been significant.
So staff members that are enjoying this, you know, who else are kind devoted to that would be Nancy, Chris, Lori?
Lori's been on the automatic, then she started here because we first started with water and that's been since the beginning of Castell. Where payments automatically update. And so all she manually enters is checks.
Okay.
Which she still gets a significant amount of checks, believe it or not.
I believe it.
And so it's mostly just really Chris and Nancy.
Okay.
And I think the, the other big thing about it is accuracy because you're, you eliminate that layer of miskeying. The entry information and, and we do still have to review everything. So, you know, we check it every day, compare it, make sure everything matches and. Is as it should be, so.
Okay.
We fill our time with other things.
There's no doubt about that. Okay, thank you.
And then the final upgrade, um, which has been amazing for me is accounts payable. So we started offering A C H to, uh. Our vendors for making payments, which is huge, eliminates the need for checks and the delays and checks not being received. Um, and so in the past, we didn't have this specific module because we didn't have that many, uh, accounts. And so I would go in and have to enter a manual A C H voucher and then email each one individually to vendors. And then go into the bank, manually enter all that information in, and it took quite a bit of time. And now we have like twenty-five people who have signed up for A C H. And so with the purchase of this module, I'm able to just create a file and it automatically sends it to the bank. It automatically sends it to everyone that had an A C H. So. Um, that's going to be big.
Just a general question, what's driving all this change? Is it the vendors saying we bought this? Are you guys researching, finding out all this is easier or all of the above?
Well, we just, we're trying to get with the twenty-first century. We had, like, not too long ago, we were issuing paper checks and the mayor had to come in and sign every single check. And so as things have gotten streamlined and really since I've been able to have a bandwidth to investigate and to really learn about all the things that. That the financial software offers, um, and you know, to really evaluate, do we have a need for this? Is it worth, you know, the price of it and. Um, so yeah, I would say we were in survival mode for quite a while, just making it work the way that we were taught. But as you dig out, you can kind of start thinking about things a little bit more critically and. Yeah, so I guess that would be.
Yeah, with all the updates, I can imagine that the internal control process will be a little different. It may help and but, um, in the transitional period, it may add another, um, layer of internal control.
Yes.
On to it and to see, um, what we need to pay attention to. It'll be very different from before when you handle it manually.
Yeah, absolutely. It's going to change those processes a lot. Okay, that's all I have for that. And then just a quick audit update. So we had our audit that came onsite this year. It was the first year since, um, I've started here. Which was really nice. Um, so that was August twenty seventh and they had just a couple of things they noted. So, um. The S D C fund, you guys know, last year changed, combining all three water parks and storm into one fund. But we still, um, on advice of our financial consultant, accounted for them separately, which was perfectly acceptable. But the auditors asked that we now account for them all in just one single fund. So I had to renumber everything. It's all separated within that fund, but it's one single fund. So you'll notice the difference, um. Between the fourth quarter finance report and any of you at this one, on the current one, it has just S D C fund. But on that fourth quarter one, you saw it broken out, water, S D C, parks, store. So that was one change.
But it's still coded, so if you did to write that out by category, you could still do that in.
Yes, so within the S D C fund, I have a separate G L code for water, S D C charges, parks. So it's all broken out, but. It's all contained within the same fund. So on your next monthly finance report, you'll see the difference there. It's all from fifty-nine now instead of forty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three. So.
Yes, I would like, love to have the, um, breakdown between the fund in the S, S D C funds. Um, and receive a report and give us some, something to, to, to bring down.
That's a great question and I was going to ask you guys about that because you noticed in the, um, I combined everything for the purposes of this financial report. So would you prefer to see it? Broken out?
You can just give us some supportive, you know, data.
Okay.
It can be on here. So as well as, you know, if I want to devote to it, I can. But this is just for me. I don't know, you guys. If you want to have a spread out from here, so it'll be a longer report.
Like, I think it would be useful.
Okay. Yeah, that's. I can also include.
Sorry, somebody's speaking online. Who was it?
He said Joy.
Joy, hold on one second. I didn't call you fast enough. Thanks.
Um, I was just saying whichever was easiest either to include in the report or be supplemental.
Um, the other option is when I go over the financial review in the slides, I could include a slide that showed all that data.
That's too quick. Sometimes I can't, can't.
Okay, then I'll just, I'll just add it to that. That's no problem. So it'll still say S T C fund, but then. Where it says charges for services, I'll have a line for each one. That would be great. Okay, yeah.
Joy, back to you. Oh, you're muted.
We can hear you.
I was just going to say the same thing, so.
Okay.
Great.
Great.
Thank you. Um, and then we had a couple of journal entries just to close out funds that closed that had a bit of an ending fund balance in it. But other than that, um. We had no correct internal entries, which is huge for the city. Yeah, so that was very exciting. And we were compliant with all public contracting law, so no dings on any of that. Um, we had all of our Visa receipts, all of our timesheets were signed, so all the little things that, that they tried to find, they didn't find. So that's wonderful. And and then we're estimating the audit should be complete by December. So hopefully this is December, uh, council meeting, uh, Corey. With the Q and E will present. January would be the latest, but they haven't got back to me quite yet.
Very much, yeah.
Thank you. Yes, it's, uh, there's no other feeling like having someone forth for your work trying to find errors. But it went really smooth this year and it was really nice to have them onsite.
Yeah, makes communication so much easier.
Oh, yeah. And in the past, it would be like they would just ping twenty emails at me in an hour, you know, this way they could just come in my office and.
Yeah, that's great. Well, congratulations to you and staff because that doesn't happen without everybody knowing what they're supposed to do and how to do it. So that's great.
Yeah, that was wonderful. And then, um, I didn't know if any folks had questions about the fourth quarter. I just put a slide here for a real good overview. I sent out this report. Um, in July, so it's just all of this clear, one four, one five. And I don't know if anyone had any questions on that or wanted me to elaborate on anything.
Let's check and see. Do we have questions?
I don't.
No.
Okay.
Any, uh, anyone online?
Joy?
As a no, okay.
Like all that, everything's heard.
Right. Um, and then just as we go through these slides, uh, if you guys have any input on. Additional information you might like me to highlight in these slides or information that you don't find really relevant. Uh, that would be helpful. Sometimes it's hard to talk about number stuff because it's kind of dry and.
Not to this group.
Um, so here we have our total revenue from collections. I know a lot of people often are curious about that. Included in that, uh. Category is short-term rental tax, the rental licenses, franchise fees, business license, and then planning, inspection and tax fees. Tech fees come from e permitting payments and also from the express bill pay Visa, uh, payments. The short-term rental tax that never represents revenue from April, May, June. So, um, we're taking in right now payments from. July, August, September, which is our highest, um, highest quarter in the fiscal year.
Now, the room tax collections is the T L T.
T L T.
Tax and that's the full amount or that's the amount we receive and the rest for the county?
That's just the general fund. And then my next slide will show the total. That's just what goes into the general.
So that's the total received and then you'll show the breakout on the next slide.
Uh, no, this is only for general fund. On the next slide, I'll show the total, total received, which would be T L T and general fund for what?
Got a question from Chip.
I see that, uh. Ninety-six percent of the collections are from short-term rentals. In effect, there's thirty-three from. Uh, licenses and the balance from collections, the, the actual tax. Have you calculated, i- i- is, is there a future slide that tells us? What the percentage of the short-term rental industry is, the, the income from the short-term rental industry is as a percentage of the total general fund?
No, but I could certainly do that. That, and that would be easy to do.
I mean, I'm looking at the, the information you sent out. And i- it's bound to be dramatic, uh, because the total revenue is two point eight and, uh. Revenue from collections is one point nine and then there's, so it would just be interesting to see not just. Uh, what the percentage is of the collections, but what the percentage represents. For the general fund, it helps us understand our dependency on short-term rentals.
Okay, I just did a real quick calculation. Four thirty-seven, four hundred thirty-seven thousand asked room tax. You're questioning. Uh, what is the percentage for the, uh, total general, general fund revenue, right? It is thirty-nine percent.
Now, are you looking at all of general fund or just revenue from collections?
No, all the general.
Okay.
So you. So Kit, you're looking at the two point eight?
No.
No, I'm sorry, I'm looking at.
I'm, uh, I'm just talking about the first order, the actual, not the budget.
Oh, I see, okay.
And I'm looking at, you're, you're looking at the one point one total revenue. Is that what you're looking at?
Yes.
Oh.
Which I think for the purpose of this analysis, you would probably remove the transfers.
To chance.
When you're thinking about actual.
Yeah.
It is.
Yeah, I did a very quick.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have seen in the past that the short-term rental. Uh, collections and license fees represent a, something like fifty to sixty percent. And so. It's a helpful thing to keep track of, especially since I understand we're going to return to the discussion of alternative sources of res- revenue. So it's just helpful to understand the city's dependency on the short-term rental industry, both collections and licenses. Uh.
I, I agree.
Yeah, I would just ask Nina, um, don't. Take the request as the broader request, which is create something that helps us to see the proportion. Of funds and the impact on the general fund and then you figure out the best way to do it.
Okay.
We're not going to here to tell you, create this pie chart, do this, do that. You figure that out. You figure out if it's useful to add history to that. Or just keep it current, um, and then we'll try that out next time. It's a good suggestion, Chip.
That's great.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, it's good. I agree. That would be helpful to see the trend and then if it, if we are watching for alternative, you know, a revenue, it's critical. How much it is now compared to the history.
Okay, yeah.
And we pay for the future.
And I, I s- thank you, Mayor, for saying that because my point was simply to understand the dependency, not to give somebody a formula for doing that.
Yeah. Got it. I figured that, but just in case, I say the obvious on a regular basis in these meetings, so, okay. Great. I do have a question. Um, so I, um, was on the phone this morning, as I always am Tuesday mornings with the collection people from the county in different cities. Were reporting once a week and Rockaway, Mayor of Rockaway reported a seven percent increase for them this order. On, uh, short-term rental revenue.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and well, that shouldn't include their hotels too. So are you seeing, how are you seeing the, uh, revenue come in compared to what we had forecasted or planned for?
For this fiscal year, I'll show you.
Well, how about a segue to the next slide? Great.
And I will say, I did a little bit of research on that because they, they don't collect their own T L T tax. So the state, they contract with the state and the state collects it and remits it back to them.
Oh, interesting.
And we had kind of talked about that as an option, but the, the odd thing about it is. So they collect a quarterly tax, but then they have the whole, as I understand it, they have the whole next quarter to permit it back to you. So. Whereas we have a month, right? Folks pay for that the next month.
Okay.
And then the other part of that is you don't get any detail whatsoever. You just get a check. So you have no, you're not sending returns. You can't audit anything, so.
I don't assume they charge to do that?
They do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there's.
And you have to update your ordinance to allow for it. So anyway, that was, uh, something interesting we learned from Rockaway. Um, oh, and then I will also note the short-term rental licenses. I think I mentioned that's the bulk of it for the year is why it's so high. In August is when most of those rentals come in. And then it's here, so the T L T breakdown. So I've included, uh, last fiscal year compared to this. Um, second quarter of last fiscal year, we received four hundred forty-one thousand. Uh, this fiscal year, we were five seventeen, so we're up seventy-six thousand dollars this. For this quarter or for the second quarter. Um, and we haven't concluded. Payments for the third quarter yet. Does anyone have any questions on that?
And one comment, Nina, is with, uh, one hotel that just sold Sunset Surface. It'll be offline for six months. So I, I don't know if that'll impact our future income.
Probably will skew the data.
Well, we'll still have, you know, rentals available, but maybe not at that price point. So I'm wondering if that would negatively affect the next six months. So. Just.
That's a good assumption. I'm not sure how much revenue we get from them as it is.
Right.
The next question.
Yeah.
Which if Leila were here would point out is not a point of discussion in this.
I don't think we're on the.
I don't think you're right. But behind the scenes, as you're working with.
Yeah.
Leila on watching revenue come in based on forecasts. You all are aware that that hotel was offline, much like you dealt with the offline impact of the park last year. Um, we also have the other two hotels, same owner group who are doing renovations. So there may be some shifts. So I just ask. That you pay the appropriate amount of attention to that coming in. And if there's anything, the Budget Committee or the Council would need to know about. Shifts and, um, how revenues are coming in based on that. We should be informed, but we're not going to get into any detail about that.
Thank you. That's, it's a great suggestion, especially as we start looking at budget stuff. Um, and then, okay, revenue from other agencies. Is this a slide that's helpful for folks? Okay.
Yes.
Uh, so the grant, that was for our, uh, D L C D grant, the final payment, the comp plan, the. The grant from the state. So we received the final payment from that this fiscal year. Um. Everything else is tracking pretty close. The I G A, that represents the money from the state parks. We haven't received Wheeler or the England. That's typically closer to the end of the fiscal year. So then.
Uh, I G A from Pi year, the twenty-eight, how much do we get the?
For Wheeler and the England?
I'm sorry. The grant.
Oh, forty-four thousand from the grant.
Thirty-four?
No, forty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine.
That's why, um, the total of the revenue from other agency is higher, right? It's like counted as forty-eight percent of the total year. Okay, that's, that was my question. It was brilliant. Thank you.
And then, uh, oh, Steve, oh, Chip?
Well, I, I, I'm sorry, but I. And am perhaps remiss in, uh, not doing my homework, but I don't remember what the N I E C A excise tax is.
Oh, I forgot the N I E.
Oh, yeah, I know, but I don't know, even with N I E added, I don't remember what it is.
That comes from building fees. So new builds pay a portion to N I E C A's tax. Uh, we remit part of that to N I E C A's school district. And then, is it the school district? That's where I nail it to. I'd have to look. And then we keep a small portion.
Okay, school district. Thank you. Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then revenue sharing. Oh, did someone else have a question? No, okay. Um, keep in mind that comes in quarterly, so it looks a bit low. We've only received one payment so far, so. And then professional services, uh, I'm sure everyone appreciates seeing this slide. I know it's always a, uh, question. Um, city planner, seventy-two thousand, that's so high from the, um, comp plan update. And then legal fees, of course, is always, uh, a big hit. Uh, the audit, uh, I think we'll have one more payment. That's, uh. Sixteen thousand for the year for that. And so that represents.
For the wallet, okay.
And other than that, looking too exciting, I T. Oh, Joy?
First Joy, then Chip.
Um, I, I couldn't hear what you said on about the.
Um, I I couldn't hear what you said on about the city planner. What is that payment?
Oh, that's for, well, it's city planning that we contract with them. But it's the bulk of that why it's so high is for the comp plan update.
Oh, for the comp plan, okay.
Yeah. And if folks are interested in seeing the breakdown of how much is for the comp plan and how much is for planning services, I can do that.
That would be useful because comp plan is a one-time thing, a bit of the over a long period of time. And the other planning um fees are ongoing, so that would be useful, I think, Nancy. Thanks. Chip?
Yes, my question is related to legal. I understood we were breaking down the subject matter of that. Are we still doing it?
Uh, I haven't been breaking down the subject matter of that. A lot of it is confidential, so I don't know how much. I mean, I guess you could say general matters, you know, I have to talk to Leila. I know we give you a breakdown of that.
Yeah, you know, for a while, because of some requests having to do with uh one of the lawsuits and also the working on the water referendum things we had. We were breaking that out because we were trying to give people a sense of the cost of those kind of, and I'm sorry, I, this is awkward to say here. I was trying to help you guys, um.
I'm looking at you up there.
Okay. See, this is good in person, but I uh not at this thing. Um we were trying to, and for my benefit too, trying to understand when people would say, well, what does it cost to do that? And then we got an idea of what it was for legal fees, et cetera. And I stopped doing that a couple of months ago. There wasn't any pressing need to do it, but we can come back to that if that's useful for people. A lot of, as I would assume, a lot of that right now is uh tied up in all the contract work we've had going on with the Classic Street.
Mm-hmm, right.
Project. So a good chunk of that, a good chunk of that is going to be that. There's probably some, we've got a uh pending potential lawsuit with one of the contractors who didn't get the bid from the um Classic Street project, so we probably have some activity related to that too.
Correct.
Those would be the big ones.
And some of that detail you're asking about is when we approve those for payment, it's working out.
Yeah, but I would also do a verbal on it because not everything was in the packet. So let's take that away as a, should we keep it ongoing, like monthly tally on it for people? People are interested in it because it kind of is a bellwether for people sometimes of.
They're always interested in litigation.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Why are we in a fight?
Well, also just the contract services, which I think has been
Yeah.
used for me educational, because contract review is a big, big part of the legal um legal process, legal review of legal services that I use, so.
And and I go through every one of those invoices, and I have a whole spreadsheet that puts it all into each category.
Yeah.
Which is uh particularly necessary for the indirect cost month, so we know what to allocate and what to take out.
Is helpful.
Yeah.
This.
And then also, of course, informs how I owe the invoice, which departments I bill to what, so legal takes me a long time.
Okay, well, let's take a look at that and come back with your recommendation email and what you think would be useful. Great.
Yeah, just the uh codifier in the miscellaneous category.
Codifier?
Yeah, the uh person that we hired to codify the uh ordinance system to a.
Oh, uh, we have not been billed for that yet.
We've not been billed for it?
No.
Okay.
Where should be expected to show up when it does?
Professional services.
Okay. So it'll be a category or does it fall into one of these other?
Um, well, I.
Big enough to be its own category, or is it just?
I would, yeah, I'll definitely track that separate and it'll be its own category. Anyone else have anything? I don't, that's not, that's all I've got.
My goodness. Okay.
Does anyone have any other suggestions on information they'd like to see broken down from this report? In the past, I had done earned interest. I don't know if folks are interested in in seeing that. Um, it's in the reports. I did include it this time, but I can't. People appreciate that.
It's from that safety fund.
Um, it's from our safety, the interest we earn on our safety account.
Right, right. Which will probably start to.
Yes. Exactly, but yeah.
Okay, I have a question on the personnel services on each category here. Um, are they the payroll that the payroll expense, the personnel services?
Payroll and then all of the payroll liabilities that go along with that.
Right, right.
Which danger?
Uh, all the pages, the personal expense, the services on the bottom of that. Um, it's just a general questions. Um, do you have the number of employees? Uh, do you know how many?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, is it more than last year, last?
Yes.
At this time, is one more, right?
We added uh an operations manager.
Operations manager. Is the time of the operational manager uh being distributed to each category here, like the general fund and not fund?
Yes, he's coded out of four, all the public works are coded out of four different funds, water, roads, parks, and T L T.
Because when they compare to, I have um uh a chart from you for the last year, first quarter compared to the first quarter, personnel services. In general, the um amount has gone up like from sixteen percent to like twenty on to thirty-two percent, the highest personnel services increase is in choosing.
Oh, so we switched um well, we reallocated public works a little bit, and then also uh Max, the code enforcement is paid partially out of tourism and then now partially out of the police department, because he's gonna be.
This is part of the um indirect cost allocation, right?
Um, T L T is not included. Well, we show the cost for it, but they don't do a transfer or into the general one. I might get that in, what is?
The allocation of um uh F T D isn't a part of the.
Yes.
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 That's what I meant, so.
It's in the.
Wow, okay, okay. So we need to pay attention to personnel services allocation as well when we do the indirect allocation. You know, that that review, we need to look into it yet, same. If we can have a F T D chart, a current one, that would be helpful.
Okay.
Enjoy and I look at the indirect allocation process. Um, all right. Another question I have is, you have quite a bit of um capital outlet. It's just a very general term. And I would like to know what do you apply, the, what do you apply the capital outlet money to for instance, water utilities? So um, you know, something that you can provide?
Classic. They're all classic.
That's what I have in my mind, but I just need to ask.
It's coded out of five different funds this year.
Right, right, I saw that.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And then there are some additional um specific just to the water utility, capital outlet projects that were in budget. So, so water utility includes a portion of plastic and then also the other capital outlet projects, which you can find at the back of the budget, and but all the other funds are just plastic.
Right, okay, thank you.
Good questions. Thank you, Kit. Anything else?
You can.
Before we go, oh, Chip hasn't pushed, just a second. I'll make sure Kit's finished.
No, not that, I've written down all of that.
Okay, all right, we can always come back.
Chip, go ahead, please.
Uh, this is a question to which there's no immediate answer. Uh, however, the Classic Street project raised in my mind a question of why when the Classic Street project will facilitate the movement of people, tourists especially, over to the park and protect pedestrians and cyclists, many of whom are visitors? Why we have not, why the city has not considered using uh the significant amount of capital in the tourism fund to help pay for the park that we could reasonably justify as a and and a physical improvement that will uh fall within uh the T L T strictures?
That's a great question. I could certainly bring that up with Leila. I know it's it's real particular why you can use those T L T funds forward. Probably be a question for legal, really, on if that would be an acceptable use, but that's a great thought.
Yes, I all I'm saying is that uh certainly the county has taken a very generous view of what T L T can be spent on that is physical facilities. And uh there, this seems so obvious, and when we're trying to uh maximize our use of the state grant and we're having to cut back on the uh engineering, it seems to me that tourism fund is a natural place to look to help pay for that uh multi-use path along uh the Classic Street project. It's, as I said, a general inquiry, there's no uh immediate uh response, but I think it's a legitimate question.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll bring that up with Leila.
Great, we can do that.
At the next budget meeting.
Yes, yeah. And also, if you wanted to, if there was a shorter response on that following your meeting with her, you could also send a note out to us. We don't have to wait for the next quarter necessarily, but use your judgment, yeah?
I I, one more thing, excuse me, I would point out that uh the fifty thousand dollar annual debt service payment will be gone in two years. And so even if you didn't remove capital directly from the tourism fund, you could use that as collateral for a uh 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 another piece of debt to help pay for it. In other words, you don't have to pay cash, you could use that as collateral. So there are multiple ways of uh utilizing that money for something that, like, to me, seems so obvious. Thank you.
That's great. And we'll see, because as we always are hit with the example of what seems so obvious to one person, it's not always obvious to others or the decision makers. I know Leila um just in general takes a hard look at that, so I would be surprised if she hadn't considered that already, but it's a great question to ask and let's find out what the answer is. Thank you.
So debt service payment that you mentioned, Chip, was for what?
The visitor's side.
Okay, that's what I thought.
We just made a payment for that.
Awesome.
And it's done in twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Uh, it's done November twenty-twenty-seven.
Okay. We have a couple of nice debts that are gonna be retired.
This one, you just say.
Sure, right, Tom, you have a question?
I think I'm just a little bit confused about whether having this discussion, and I don't know whether this is the right time or place for it, but this is talking about supplementing the amount of money that we have available to complete the Classic Street project. And my understanding was that we're fully funded and.
We are fully funded. I think Chip's raising it as a question of should we look, if that hasn't been looked at, that we look at again, and perhaps there's a way to use less of the city, other funds of the city, because council did allocate additional money on top of the, so yeah.
Okay.
So that's a question. No, we are fully funded. We're not trying to fill any gap.
Trying to speed the drum for more money now, okay.
No.
So she's changing the plots where that comes from, digital.
Yeah.
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 All right.
But um thanks for clarifying.
Thank you. Along those lines too, I mean, I raised a few months ago with Leila and it it, you know, just in a similar vein, um, you know, we use a portion of this building, the restaurants here are public restaurants, like a portion, you know, I uh portion of the time. And I was wondering whether or not we could use some of that T L T pot of money for some of the debt on this building, given that it's got a public function for tourists. So it seems like a lot of these questions are in the same vein and um at least for me, I've done some of my own research, looking at the O A Rs and things like that, but um just getting more information on the parameters, so what we can use that T L T that sold the T L T focus about ninety-four could also be helpful in because I I have a few other ideas on maybe what we could do with that, but I'm limited in my um my knowledge on some of those parameters. So whether we have a um that would be helpful for me at least, I mean, I can probably do my own research, but maybe have a whether it's a presentation or whether it's just a consultation with Leila or attorneys to see where the parameters are. Exactly help form all of our decisions on on what to do.
And I think that would be an interesting question with us from an outsider's view that hasn't done as much research, who doesn't have as much knowledge. I think some of those decisions are I guess I could say subjective, but they get, huh, nobody's ever asked me that before. We're gonna see if that's possible, because it's in the framework, because I would assume the O A Rs are rather broad, isn't there someone that's making the decision yes or no, so it'll be.
And a lot of um, a couple of items I have certainly gonna overlap in other other areas, so like I, anyway, I that would be helpful for me. I don't know if that would be.
I think it's good as a refresher. I mean, there are a lot of, there's a lot of knowledge presumed about policy, about history, about law, um, and a number of things, um when you serve on this committee, and some of us have been around it for a while. And then things change too, so I think it's a good suggestion. And I'd say, let's just put that on the agenda for our next quarterly meeting.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, let's kind of just call it a a refresh and an update on where where things stand with what's allowed and what's not allowed. I know the um, just from my several years of experience, there has been I think a good deal more, a good bit of movement towards applying for things and getting them approved that hadn't been considered in the past. So people so if you're wondering if the boundaries have been tested, they have, and there are more things now allowed than there were before. Um, but it's a good question. And then I think obviously it's it's Leila and Nina's job to figure out in the in the revenue planning and forecasting process where we go and how strategic we are about where we make requests for funds and why. You know, for example, the money to build those bathrooms was out of the tourism fund. We got money for that, so so, but but it never hurts to ask, and my mother always said, but uh, we just wanna make sure we're informed answers, which I think is your point.
That's, that's exact, that's exactly right, because I don't know all the history, but I have a little bit of legal knowledge about it, but it's it's a complex issue too. And I I don't expect a, you know, because you can't answer some of those questions.
Some of the specific ones, we have to ask legal, but.
Right, and they might have to ask elsewhere, you know, um, but it just, it would be.
That's really helpful, because that question does come up every year at budget. So, yeah, thank you for the suggestion.
Okay, we can do that as another budget warm-up too, so, okay.
All right.
All right, great. Is there anything else for the good of the order from anyone here, anybody online? Okay, let's just get a little audio feedback. Joy and Chip, were you able to generally track the meeting or let us know how it went as an online participant? Joy?
Yeah, I I could hear everyone and uh the the volume was good, the articulation was good, so very good.
Okay, great. Chip?
You're muted.
You're muted. Sorry.
We can't hear you.
Uh the headphones made a huge difference.
Okay.
The audio from the mic uh computer was not as good, so I'll be using headphones if I'm in this room again. If you recall, I was in that room again. I was in that room previously and it was really bad. This is an improvement. I think, is that a change, Brad and Al?
It's a new piece of equipment. This is the first time we've used this for a budget committee.
Yeah, well, it's very clear on the headphones.
Awesome.
Okay, which I presume means it's gonna be clear on the recording.
Yes.
That's fair to say, because that's the other concern. All right, well, thank you to all our various audio visual assistants and the and the. I'm adding particular. So everybody enjoy the sunny day. Uh, if you're like me, you're gonna go home and go, wow, I should have charged this uh battery power pack a couple of weeks ago, time to plug it in. So hopefully T P U D's not down here doing any work with the storms coming, but everybody enjoy the day. And Nina, thank you.
Thank you.
Doing the team leader, good work, yeah.
Okay, bye.
Thank you. We are adjourned at ten fifty.